Call a meeting to order. I'll call the roster first. I've brought members that are present. Dr. Melvin Johnson, Chair. My Mr. James McMahon, Vice Chair. To David Campbell. Dr. Karen Carter. Mr. John Coleman. Mr. Michael Erwin, he's on his way. He's stuck in traffic, so pray for him. Mr. Thaddeus Mayfield. Dr. Joyce Morley. And Mr. Marshall Orson. Teacher Forum, oh, and our Superintendent, Mr. Michael Thurman. Can't forget the leader. Teacher Forum Council Steering Committee Representative, Inez Colwell. David Hi. Teacher Forum Council Steering Committee Alternative Representative, Donna Nelson. Carleen Pippens. DeKalb Auxiliary Employees Forum Representative, Mr. Darryl Short. DeKalb PTA Council Representative, this is Marcia Cowat. You're always here. At this time, I call for a motion to adopt the April 3, 2013 call meeting agenda. Motion by Mr. Orson, second by Dr. Carter. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Agenda is adopted. At this time, I call for a motion to adjourn to a committee of the whole.
Point of vote, sir? We need to actually vote on it.
I'm sorry, we didn't. All in favor, vote. And Mr. Erwin is here. All in favor. Aye, aye, Karen. Thank you. At this time, we will call for a motion to adjourn to committee of the whole. Go move, Mr. Colwell.
Second.
Second by Dr. Morley. Is there any discussion? None. As for the vote, all in favor? Ares unanimously. At this time, we will have our Superintendent to state our purpose for this meeting and introduce our guests, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'm delighted, honored, really, to have the opportunity to introduce to you Dr. Mark Elgar, CEO of Vance Ed, who is here tonight to really engage us in a conversation regarding the accreditation review of our district. Since my first day on the job, the number one priority of my administration has been to restore a full accreditation back to the district. We have been working diligently with representatives from Vance Ed. And by the way, I've had the opportunity to meet Dr. Elgar, well as to engage him on these three occasions about the role that we should play in establishing what I think is a very positive relationship going forward. Board of Education is also working as a unified team to address board governance issues that have been raised. And I want to assure the public, all of our stakeholders, and Dr. Elgar, that DeKalb School District will meet seven Friday. Dr. Elgar's team is scheduled to visit with us in mid-May, and we're looking forward to their visit. This time, I would like to introduce to some and present to others, Dr. Mark Elgar, and welcome him back to the DeKalb School District, and invite him to share with us his vision, his thoughts, and his recommendation as to best way forward to restore full accreditation at DeKalb. Dr. Elgar.
Good evening, Mr. Thurman. Thank you for that introduction. Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to engage you this evening in a discussion around fundamentally four areas. One is, I will provide a brief overview of the accreditation process so you understand the context in which these expectations be met. Number two, a brief history related to DeKalb County and its accreditation history over the last decade. Number three, to identify specifically for you the areas of concern. And finally, moving forward. What is it that you must do moving forward to address those concerns? After each segment, I want to give you an opportunity to ask questions which can gain an understanding and clarity about the process, about the history, and the concerns in moving forward. So to begin with, the overview of the accreditation process. First and foremost, this is a voluntary process. And as such, when you make a commitment as a school system to this voluntary process, you're making a commitment to meeting the expectations that are affiliated with such a process. Accreditation has a long history in this country. Southern Association of Colleges and Schools dates back to 1895. Established here in Atlanta, in fact, the first meeting was at Georgia Tech. And through the years, it has grown in its, not only its service to schools in the South, it was introduced, we were the first to introduce accreditation below the high school level, elementary and middle school, thought accreditation. Why would they seek accreditation? It's been a sustainable, effective process of improvement over the last hundred-plus years. Process of improvement is critically important. This is about educational improvement. How can you improve what you do each and every day to benefit of the students you serve? In the South, for instance, prior to 1965, except for very well-to-do communities, most communities in the South, their elementary, middle schools, had no libraries in them, had no guidance counselors, had teachers who were not certified to teach. Southern Association of Colleges and Schools established an accreditation process which these schools sought, and in seeking that, they were able to provide the infrastructure to add libraries to their schools, guidance counselor, certified teacher. Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, also for county where it is in DeKalb and in the South and with civil rights, played a significant role in holding schools and colleges accountable for federal and state laws that related to the desegregation of our systems and colleges were placed on probation if they failed to implement federal and state decisions around the desegregation of schools. We have held firm in expecting our schools at all levels to meet their obligation to the state and country that are legal obligation. Having said that, the primary focus of accreditation is improvement. It is not a process that just focuses on governance. Governance has an important role, and I'll speak about that role in a moment, but it's about helping you improve. One of the philosophical constructs underneath is, no matter how good a school or school system is today, we believe it can be better tomorrow. We have a range of school or school systems on their performance level. No matter how high they're performing today, we still have an expectation of improvement tomorrow. So as I will be doing at the end of this month, I'll be leading an external review of a school district in Florida. Thereby, Florida counts as one of the better-performing school districts. I met with them this morning, they said, "You should expect out of areas that you must improve as a school district. You should not expect us to just come in and tell you what you already know, which is that you're a good school district." Even for the better-performing districts, expectation of improvement is a constant. So that expectation is before you as a school system. The areas in which you're seeking improvement initially, quite frankly, are beginning points for improvement for you. You have significant long-term improvements that must be made. And as I get into the history of DeKalb, you'll understand a little bit more about what those improvements are. Being said that, this accreditation process is about performance. We assess in a professional way your performance as a school system. That performance begins, but does not end, in your leadership as the governing team of this district. Where it ends, and where it should end, is in the classroom. The majority of our criteria and expectation are for what happens in the classroom each and every day. And over half our criteria and half our examination is around teachers and students in classrooms in that instructional environment. What we do know is that board governance can play a critically positive or unfortunate negative role in the effectiveness of what happens in classroom. There is not a district in this country, and we work with, so that you know, 32,000 public and private schools in 71 countries. The largest organization of its type in the world. So we come to this with significant experience of every type of school you can imagine, from the largest urban settings in this country to the most rural settings in the country. We have yet to find a school district that has significantly high performance at all levels in a dysfunctional leadership district. It doesn't exist. Because when there is serious dysfunction at this level, think of any corporation, some of you are in the business world. If the leadership can't lead, what happens to the rest of the organization? It has a negative impact. However, there is a positive correlation. We have seen the highest functioning governing boards get the best results over time. There was a study that came out last week on mayoral appointed boards in urban environments. Mayoral appointed boards over the last 15 years have outperformed elected urban boards. One of the reasons is, the nature of that appointment has led to, in each of these cases, a more unified, focused governance leadership team over that urban environment. Secondly, urban, the appointed boards in an urban environment significantly spend more money and resources on classroom initiative than they do on central office administration. Elected boards spend more money in the central office, appointed boards spend much more resources in the classroom environment. I think that takeaway is going to be a very instructive point for all of you as I get further into this conversation this evening. Because the greatest needs in this system are the furthest point from this board. That's the classroom. And when we get into the budget, we get into discussions about strategy and your role and how you can positively impact what happens in classrooms, I want to really engage you in your role in helping that happen, helping provide the environment upon which that must and can happen. We have in accreditation, five areas that we examine, the district or school. First and foremost, we understand you through your vision, your purpose, and your direction. What is it you're striving to achieve? What objectives have you set to reach that vision for that purpose? And how have you made the plans, the infrastructure, the intentions directed with the community to help cause that to happen? So our first understanding is, understand you through your vision and purpose and direction. In every school or school system, public or private, there are nuances in what they're trying to achieve. They're contextual. We see different things in urban environments than we do suburban or rural, public versus private. The second area is the governance and leadership. And the governance and leadership is not simply the board of education, but the governance and leadership which includes the superintendent and his or her staff. How do you operate as a governance leadership team, provide the direction, support, assistance to ensure that what happens in the schools each and every day is in alignment with the expectations that you have established with your vision and purpose? And that you ensure that the resources are available so that they can accomplish what is expected at the school level in meeting that vision? The third area, where over half the criteria is teaching and assessing for learning. Look at the instructional quality. Half our criteria is related to what is happening in classrooms. When we do a full visit, we spend most of our time observing students in the learning environment. Happens in that classroom, we're looking for two things, the instructional quality, but also how is instruction modified when you learn about where students are? And that's why the assessing for learning. How do teachers have access to data each and every day to make instructional decisions that will benefit kids in their classroom? What's the availability of the data? What's the accuracy of the data? Is there evidence that teachers are using that to modify lesson plans, to modify instructional approaches? One of your major areas, which we'll get to later, is related to this very concern, that teachers don't have access to the type of instructional data they need each and every day to modify instruction, meet the needs. The fourth area is resources and support systems. Do you have the resources available to you as a system to provide the educational program? Are those resources allocated to schools and classrooms in an equitable way? Equity is not equal. Equity is based on where they're needed. And, you know, to distribute resources equally across a district is one of the most unfortunate strategies in school system because it does not provide equity. You merely need to pay attention to the needs across this district. They're not equal in every setting. They're not equal in every school or every classroom. Also, what are the support systems that students are provided to support them to be successful in their educational endeavors? Some of those support systems are community-based, that are aligned and connected and integrated with the school system, but ensuring that each and every child has access to support systems necessary to help them achieve success in school. Lastly, using data to improve. And this is more the summative. You get data on an annual basis, some of it's from the state, some of it's from your own efforts. How do you use that data to improve what you do each and every day of the year? How do you use that data to establish budgets each and every year? How do you use that data to make decisions around recruitment of staff and the type of staff you need? So we look at the use of data in a summative way to improve the quality of the system in the school. Every five years, we come in to conduct a full evaluation. That evaluation happened in this district a year ago. Those are on a regular cycle. We expect at the end of that five years, that within two years of that visit, you will satisfy all the required actions that came out of that evaluation. You have up to two years to fully complete those required actions. If in the event, we learn that there, and through a variety of mechanisms I'll get into later, that there are concerns, that there's a possibility you're not meeting standards, between those five years, we can, as we did in DeKalb, launch an independent investigation to ensure that you are meeting standards. And when you're not, hold you accountable to meeting standards. So although you're, within this five-year window, it doesn't guarantee you there's no interaction between us three. We monitor very closely, large as we are, 32,000, we have 41 offices across the United States and abroad. We have nearly 18,000 professionals who volunteer their services to us each and every year. We have state staff in every state that monitor and work with the volunteers in that network to ensure that we are providing you personal attention related to the work that you do to improve. Not done from the central headquarters where I work each and every day here in the metropolitan area of Georgia. We have a state office, Kennesaw, that works closely with staff here on the accreditation process. I want to stop there and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you want to ask relative to understanding the accreditation process, the expectation of that accreditation process, before we move into specifically your history in the area.
I did have one question regarding observations during the evaluation process when governance is an issue. Can you describe for us what your observations have been when there have been, what I'll describe would be transitions either in the community or even within the system? Some of the timeframes that you've seen where governance or the system was not aligned with the community that was transitioning?
Certainly, we see a lot of that, especially in urban environments. There, over the last 20 years, there's been significant shifts on the makeup of that urban environment. And there are challenges to ensure that the elected board truly understands its new community. It may be elected by a community that it knows, but there are new communities that emerge in urban settings that actually have yet to participate in that process. And they're either not represented or underrepresented. And so one of the challenges that boards have is to know their community as it evolves. And where we see problems that emerge that are the greatest is where that board is ineffective in understanding the total community that it's serving. And sometimes, they limit their understanding to those who are most closest to them, who voted for them, that they have a relationship. But that isn't their total community. And I think that's actually one of the challenges here in DeKalb. This community is far more diverse. It is not just African-American and Caucasian. You are an urban school system. You're not a suburban school system. If you look at the characteristics of an urban environment, you have growing minority populations other than African-American and Caucasian. This is not an issue just between Caucasian and African-American. And if you treat it as that, you're going to miss trying to accomplish. You have in a whole Asian quarter, you have a whole Latino growth, you have other languages, you have refugees from other countries. They're the kids who are going to your schools every day. And quite frankly, many of those kids are the kids who are, the schools are failing. They're not, they're not reaching. So as a board, your community is not the constituents who voted you in or appointed you to this board. Really want to understand your community? Go around your neighborhoods and see how it's changed. It's been a dramatic, I've been in this area 20 years, and I've seen major changes, not only in DeKalb, but Atlanta, Buette, Fulton, Cobb, all of them. But what we have noticed, just in this area, some boards adapt better to the emergence of new communities than others because they acknowledge, hey, that exists. And I think part of the struggle here is, you really, you know who your community is, and you understand how it's emerged in a very rapid way. So the problems that you're facing are far more complex. This is not a north-south issue. I'll get into that a little bit later. That's been the other DeKalb, that it's north versus south.
John?
You, if you're going to get into this later, definitely let's defer to that time. But I was interested, when you went through the criteria you look at for teaching and assessing for learning, just getting a little more context and understanding of the way that teachers are getting data and modifying their approaches in the classroom based on that, and exactly what you mean by that. It'd almost be good to have a picture painted of what you consider best in class there, or what you consider kind of a really successful system for them.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, let's get into that a little bit later on the required actions to really understand what you, what you have available to you and what you, what you need to move to. But it's a great question, and it's part of the required action, so we'll make sure we get to it. The other? All right. Let me go over briefly the history that brought us to today before I talk about current concerns. The challenges facing DeKalb County today were not created just in the last two years. I've said that from day one. Said it to the state board, I've said it to the prior board, said it to prior administrations. These have evolved over at least a decade. And if we just go back a decade, in 2004, this system was on probation for governance issues. For the significantly different-looking board than the one that was in December versus even the one that is today. Okay? And there are some underpinnings as to why even governance 10 years ago was a problem. Part of it is the operating environment. Some people want to use the word culture. I use the word operating environment. It has emerged where there's been practices that have not necessarily been written down, but have been carried forward through board member to boards as the unintended orientation. For instance, visiting schools. Okay? The day you were appointed or elected to this board, your ability to walk into a school changed. Whether you were a parent before then, whether you were a educator before then, as soon as you were elected or appointed as a board member, your ability to walk into a school and the way you walk into a school dramatically changed. Okay? I have two daughters in high school. I cannot walk into that high school as a parent. I can declare myself as a parent, disassociate myself with what I do, but the bottom line is, everybody in that building will not look at me as a parent first. Doesn't matter. I have to walk differently than other parents. I have to engage the professional staff differently than other parents. When you walk into a school, and what's been carried on from board member to board member, boards to boards, and I have seen this over the last 15 years, is rather than taking away what your prior role as a parent or just a community person of interest, you've added to it this position of authority, even though by law, you have zero authority individually. The authority only is vested in this board when you meet in a publicly, legally constitutive meeting. None of you has any authority as individuals. But when you walk into that school, you are a board member, first and foremost. And when you start to engage staff, it's just, you're engaging somebody who the staff views as ultimately one of their bosses. That conversation is very different. Think about it, when you've, in an environment where you have to address your boss, when you're talking with your boss, when your boss gives you his or her sense of things, when your boss gives you his or her sense of, maybe something should be done differently or that. What has been part of the practice, the operating environment, is that individual board members should be in the schools. If they're to be able to do their job effectively, they got to be in the schools regularly. And what, quite frankly, the amount of in the schools that the boards have done over the last 10 years has not been functionally advantageous to those schools. It has created a sense of instability, insecurity, and has created a lack of direction. Because do I take my direction from my principal, my board member, my superintendent? Who do I take direction from? Okay? And one of the things that we noticed in the, in, over the last 10 years, and it was there, I went through and read everything 10 years ago, was the volume of communication between board members and individual staff members. Why do you need to communicate directly with individual staff members as a board member? Okay? You're in the governing body of an organization, and I'm on several, by the way. I know what it is to be in your seat. Okay? I also, just so you know, I was the student representative to the Board of Education and the community in which I grew up in. At the same time, my mother was the chairwoman of that board. We had a house rule. We could not discuss, "Board matters in the house, in the car, on the way to the board meeting, only when we're at the board meeting." And I was not always in agreement with my mother and the governing body there. But at any rate, the point of this is, those emails, no matter how well-intended, those phone calls, no matter how well-intended, cause tremendous disruption in the operations of the school. And it is not your job. Your job is to govern. Your job isn't to, okay? Quite frankly, if I'd be, you know, I'm pretty straightforward. You should only be going into schools when you're invited to go into schools by principals because they have a function, they want you there as an honorary guest. You should not be dropping in, dropping by, or, "Well, I'm driving by, trying to learn something." And it should be in that manner. You have to govern at this level. When you bring yourself down into the school level, you actually lose sight of your governing responsibility. You have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire school system, not the schools you've been visiting for the last three weeks. Okay? We have 10 years of history of board members, goes from one board to the next, that this is one of those things you must do. Must be intimately involved in the day-to-day work of a school system. One of the things I tell boards is, to monitor whether you're governing at the level you should, is most of your activity and your interest, if you have two columns on a piece of paper, is this a day-to-day operational issue, or is this a long-term future issue? Okay? Put a check mark every time you're engaged. Put a check mark every time you're engaged in a conversation or an activity that is something day-to-day. Put a check mark in the column when you're talking and engaging something that's future. Okay? Mr. Thurman and his staff, they're the left column, they're on my left side. They're the day-to-day. They're the day-to-day operations. That's why you hired him. May not know that, but that's why you hired him. Okay? On the right side is you, the future direction of the system. So over the last 10 years, governance has been a significant issue. But I don't blame it on just a small group of people. There's no blame actually to the people. You've been part of an operating environment where you've just fallen into from group after group saying, "Well, this is the way this is supposed to be carried out." You look at it, there's been an inconsistent application of training. So how do you learn how to be a board member? Well, you look to your senior board members and see how they do the job. And you follow suit. So it's been carried on. Secondly, you have challenges associated with how to deal with the barrage of phone calls, or the barrage of emails. People want you to solve their individual problem. They want to help. Problem is, individual problems, there's a whole process, the policy through staff and all the way up to Mr. Thurman, that's where it goes. You get yourself involved in solving their individual problem. Once you solve one of them, you're going to have to solve 100 more. It doesn't stop. Once again, it will bring you right into the day-to-day operations. And it's hard for you to say to somebody, "Listen, I understand your concern, but I, I am not, this is not the right process upon which this individual problem can be mitigated." You must go back to your principal, this person, superintendent. Don't say to them, "I'm going to pass your concern on to the superintendent and have him look into it." Because then you just became a carrier to help solve the problem. You actually, you need, and it's a hard thing to do, is to bring back to them and say, "You need to go through the process." Don't own their problem for them. They have to own their problem. And I know that's hard because some of you, three of you at least, have been voted in here, and you want to be responsive to your constituents. You also want to be responsible. And it's more important for you to be responsible to the overall system. So that's a second part of this operating environment that has pervaded every board for the last decade, is a significant involvement in trying to help solve people's individual problems. Then what I've seen, and I've witnessed it directly, board members pitted against board members to determine whose individual problem has more merit, whose individual problem is of greater priority. And board members started gaining discussions about these individual matters, and I sit there and I listen and I wonder, "Why are they even talking about this? This is not their problem to solve." Okay? I've heard, and I, I know directly, prior board members who have gone in and tried to advocate for maybe a student who might want to attend a school that was expelled, or a student who might want to go to a different school for their athletic program, or a student who didn't get the grades they wanted. That's not the role of a board member. Soon as you walk into that conference, the principal believes they have a boss in front of them that they have to respond to, even if policy dictates that they should do, that they don't do what the board member's asking him to do. And that breaks the integrity of the system when it starts to make decisions that policy doesn't define, or policy doesn't support. But then you look over the last 10 years, another area. The area is the use of financial resources. Remember, we work with school systems of all shapes and sizes across this country. In fact, the 50 largest urban school systems in this country, we work with over 30 of them. So we understand the environment in which you operate. You have the financial resource as a system that are in the upper tier of financial resources in this country for a system your size. You're not in the short end of financial resource. Yet, today, you're operating a system with debt. It did not happen overnight. Once again, it happened over a period of 10 years of decisions that were made on an individual basis. And that gets, we'll get to my fourth point in a moment about direction. But today, you're operating a system where you're spending far greater dollars on central office resources than an average system your size. You're spending far less money on the classroom than a system your size. Your student achievement results, not surprisingly, have been stagnant over a decade. You have more attorneys and more attorney fees than three systems combined your size. Three systems combined your size spend less money in aggregate than you spend as one system. You need to significantly reduce that. You don't need, and I have my associate general counsel meet today, and you don't need the number of legal advisors that you have. It is, it is one of your most glaring areas of need that you must address in this next budget, is to significantly reduce this area of costs. Example, budget for legal fees, the last five years, average budget hit amount was $1 million. The retainer fee, not the expended fee, the retainer fees of two law firms exceeded 2.5 million. You want to ask me, "Why would you only budget a million when you had a contract and a retainer that required you to spend at least two and a half million?" That's not what you expended. You expended far greater than that. There is no other urban school system in just the metro area that has two law firms on retainer. Okay? This is an area where we're going to expect significant change and improvement because these are resources that should be elsewhere. Where should these be resources? Well, classrooms. I'm a former administrative teacher. Give me a million dollars? Could do a heck of a lot more with a million dollars than give it to attorneys. All respect aside, to attorneys that are in the audience. That's where this system needs, okay? Needs to be redirected. The last area, over this 10-year period, there's been no community collaboratively-developed strategic plan that galvanizes and focuses the effort of this district towards improving student achievement. Collaboratively, community-based, strategic plan that galvanizes and focuses the effort of this district to improve student achievement. There've been plans produced, but produced, anybody, we could sit here tonight, folks, and I can produce a plan. But it's being the community in a collaborative way, galvanizing a focus on improving student achievement that doesn't exist here throughout this system. We walk into schools, every school has different understandings of what's expected. There's no galvanizing clear direction on how to achieve it and what you're expected to do. That has been a concern of ours for 10 years. Okay? For 10 years. It has an impact because one of the things, your financial responsibility is one of your key responsibilities, the other as a board is setting direction. That strategic plan is the key document to setting direction. It's a, it's a document that's key to you making decisions around who should be superintendent, to how you're organized, to what, how you direct resources to support the operation. Budgets are being developed without the benefit of being guided by that type of strategic direction. It's a critical point. So this history of over a decade has led to today and this evening. We realize that you will not, in one year, fix 10 years of accumulated deficiencies. We also believe it's going to take at least three, if not closer to five years, to turn an urban school system around. You cannot turn an urban school system around even in a year. This is a significant challenge. But our commitment to all of you is over the next three to five years and longer, it's one of the advantages of working with an organization like ours, is we will be with you the entire way, to help guide, support, advise, monitor, reinforce, give you feedback because it's that external set of eyes that is so critical. Internally, you may, you're going to have blind spots. There're going to be blind spots of things you do well that you don't realize, and there will be blind spots of things you're not doing well. Our contribution and commitment to you is helping you see the full picture and bringing in professionals to help support them. I'm going to stop there on the history before we get into current concerns. Are there any questions?
I don't know if this is a major one, but it's certainly one I'm curious about, specifically as it relates to the budget and perhaps frameworks or benchmarks for best practices around those. You refer to the legal issues, obviously, which is a standout, but I'm curious to know, is there a standard for percentages of allocation on line items from, from advanced ed perspective?
What, what we would do, and we would help you identify, is we would try to find like systems, urban systems, with similar budget size and student population, and give you, there are benchmarks, and we would, we would encourage you to look outside the state of Georgia because there are other systems similar to you. Jefferson County, which is in Louisville, Kentucky, will look at their allocations as it goes, and to see where per pupil expenditures are from central office down to classroom.
So, so it's more of an art as opposed to a standard that you have?
Right, right. Because we recognize, us working across the board, it's, it's difficult to set a finite number. However, you can contextualize. The other, the other piece to this is as you approach this budget, which is one of your first, most critical priorities, is you have to build budgets from the, from the, inside the classroom out, not the top down. Areas of concern. There are three areas of primary concern. The first, and they are, they are in priority order. The first and foremost is student achievement. Can this district demonstrate capacity and actually get the results to improve student achievement? First. Also going to be the most complicated and complex one to achieve, and it will take you the longest. Second, can you get your fiscal house in order? And you are going to face an extraordinarily tough budget preparation for next year. You're going to need to make some significant decisions. And you need to do that, and we'll talk a little bit about a, a process there, but you're going to really need to disengage yourself from the subjectiveness that you're going to receive from individuals who are going to lobby for their peace. You have to establish a budget in the best interest of all the students at DeKalb County. It's easier said than done. The third is demonstrate effective governance. We recognize that it's going to take time in all these three areas. We have 11 required actions that further call out each of these areas of concern. Ideally, if this were September, I would tell you that the first thing you should do is establish a strategic direction before you even develop a budget. Unfortunately, we don't have that ideal situation. It's April 3rd. You must develop a budget. So what we expect because of this, and Superintendent Thurman and I talked at great length, is the first and foremost activity you should engage in is the development of next year's budget. Through that, you can begin, begin to build your capacity to govern as a team. You should infuse in that, not, you don't have the time to dedicate as much, but you should start to have conversations about what is important, what are the important elements as we go forward that we must think about addressing. Those should be projected. They may not be the exact wording or exact expectations when you do establish a strategic direction, but you have to have some guideposts. What are you seeking to achieve? Okay? So you'll have some preliminary discussions with the understanding that when you go through a true strategic planning process that is facilitated and community-based, that may get modified for the long term. But in the short term, what are the major objectives for next year's budget that you must achieve? Superintendent Thurman and his staff should be giving you some ideas there, should be giving you some direction for you to consider, but you need some guideposts around which you're going to make budgetary decisions. At the same time, to begin the process of training, which will help you become a cohesive team, and then later in the year, after the budget, you should launch into a strategic planning process. So by December, we'll, we'll leave May out of this, by December, we don't expect that you're going to be able to demonstrate improving student achievement. We will expect a balanced budget for 13, 14. We will expect in a plan that's been enacted and followed, and I know you have a budget deficit plan, but we're going to expect evidence that you actually followed it. We will expect that you're actually demonstrating the ability to align your resources with the needs of this district. Demonstrating an ability to understand equity, that, that the distribution of resources is done equitably, not equally. And demonstrate the ability to improve through the resources available, the opportunities for teachers and students in classrooms to succeed. In that budget, we're going to look for evidence of those pieces. We don't expect that you're going to get improvement of student achievement, but you, can you start to set the frame upon which that improvement can occur in the future? At the same time in December, either nearly complete or complete, will be a community-based, collaboratively-developed strategic plan for your future. Because you don't want to go into next year's budget without that.
Did you say September?
December, December, by December.
You committed at that time or you completed by that time?
Either nearly completed or completed. In other words, what we'd like is by the time you hit the budget season for next year, that budget gets developed on a completed, committed, focused strategic plan, so that future budgets have that benefit. Community-based, you, you're, as members of this board of, of DeKalb County Board, your first and foremost responsibility is, is a service to this community. Schools are a community investment, and this plan deserves, and I'm talking all the communities, go back to that comment earlier, not just African American and Caucasian communities will form this plan, the communities of DeKalb County, and you have multiple ones to ensure that they have an opportunity. So there are 11 required actions, and there was a, sort of a semblance of an action, of plans to address these. I would actually encourage you first to organize them around the three areas. Improving student achievement, fiscal house in order, effective government. So you put each of these into one of those buckets. And you, you actually start to identify short and long-term actions you're going to take. We do not expect the 11 required actions to be completed by December. But we want to see, and what I said to Superintendent Thurman, and I'll say to you publicly tonight, you've lost at least three months in this process that was designed to take a year. We will not penalize this board for that. We will understand and expect that there should be progress, but not the progress we would have seen in a year. So by December, first off, it will not result in you being fully accredited. You will probably either remain on probation or possibly warned. You will, you will expect that you will have continued expectations of improvement. They will be there for at least three years. And we're committed to ensuring that you fulfill these 11 required actions. These 11, quite frankly, once they're fulfilled, the one area you're still going to be short of is a sustainable track record. of is a sustainable track record of improving student achievement. Sustainable, be there. One year of improvement of student achievement is not improving student achievement. We actually want to see three to five years. You're probably a year or two away from really meaningfully starting to be able to do that, because you have to right-size your budget, you have to reallocate resources, you have to recruit and retain the quality staff you need to improve instruction in your schools. You have to give them the proper direction and assistance and support through a carefully constructed strategic plan. All of those things have to happen first before you can meaningfully start to improve instruction that students will benefit in the long run. Same time, kids are coming to school every day, and to end this before we get into an open period, this, the issues here were a performance-based issue. I want to commend all of you for your commitment tonight to meeting, to willing to meet the challenges this district faces today and tomorrow. If you stay focused, and if you understand that you're not going to solve every problem overnight, and you don't try to solve every problem all night, and you stay balanced in the fact that each and every day, you have to allow the system to do the best it can for kids, give yourself the latitude that over time you will improve what you do for kids, you will get there in a much shorter period of time. But if you try to heroically achieve it overnight, you'll cause more problems than you will achieve and succeed. Stop there.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to start by asking a couple of questions about the strategic planning process. I know we've got a short-term focus on the budget process, but kind of looking forward, a couple of things that came to mind that I'd love to hear you elaborate on a little bit more for me is, first, when you say, "Community involvement and a collaborative process for developing a strategic plan," it'd be helpful to me if I kind of heard a little more context about what that looks like when it's done very well, and what you mean by that. And then secondly, I think, kind of part and parcel of that, how this Board can help initiate that process without micromanaging it. So what are, you know, what are the reasonable ways in which we can initiate that process so that it is community-based, that the staff are taking care of the things that they can take care of, but we are, you know, we are leading in the way that we, setting direction in the right way?
Great question. The first thing the Board must do is define the process with the help of an outside expert. I really do believe, even our organization who is experts in strategic planning, I hired an outside resource to go through our strategic planning process. We're in the middle of that right now. And so the Board's role in that is to define the process that you're going to follow, not make any determinants of what that process would result in, saying, "Here's our process." And we've, and you'll make a decision on what is the external expert that you're going to help facilitate. Typically, in a process like this, the very first thing that happens is your external facilitators do an entire environmental scan. And that environmental scan starts way away from this Board table. It goes out into the communities, it tries to understand all the various communities that DeKalb County schools support, it will engage parents, students, teachers, all sectors of the community, all ethnic, racial groups within, nationalities within the community. It will then gather all that information, and will start to engage professional staff throughout the organization. And professional staff, rather than administering this process, should become participants in the process. That's one of the benefits to getting an external resource, is the voices of the staff are equally as valid as a voice of a parent, or of a student, or of a Board member. So all of you want to become participants. During that environmental scan, you'll be, they typically will talk to all of you in either one-on-ones or in smaller groups. They'll engage you in exercises to help understand your vision, your philosophy, your expectations, your hopes, your fears that you have relative to the school system. Their role is to take all that environmental scan and then bring it back to what you want us to establish is a core planning team. The core planning team, you have a couple of representatives from this body, a couple of representatives from Superintendent Thurman and his staff, representatives from the schools, representatives from the parent groups, representatives from students. It cuts across everything. In that core planning team is the face of DeKalb County as an urban school system. You took a picture of it. Is it a picture of the true county? Make sure that planning reflects that, okay? So the outside facilitator works with that core planning team. That core planning team is the carrier. They start to assemble with the help of the outside facilitator the results of the environmental scan, they'll start to put together vision statements, mission statements, core values, and these things will periodically be shared with all of you and reshuffled back through the community, so the community gets to respond to them. So a draft vision statement might come out. It isn't just come to you, you vote yes or no. They actually will go back to the community and say, "What does this vision statement say to you? Based on this vision statement, what would you expect schools to do differently tomorrow than they're doing today?" So they test it, they check it, and they go through this process until eventually you end up with a strategic plan that goes from vision, mission, core values, strategies and objectives with specific actions to be taken, okay? And usually, the areas that you're going to focus on are generally, depending on who you get as an outside facilitator, three to seven areas. Probably with an urban system like this, you're going to be really challenged to get it below five. It'd be five to seven or eight areas, major areas, with specific actions. And eventually, that plan gets presented to all of you as a Board, and you vote. Once you vote, that becomes the doctrine. That becomes the doctrine that guides every decision you make, from policy development and adoption, to budget development and adoption, to recruitment of professional staff, to the organizational chart that Superintendent operates, to the distribution of staff throughout this district. It is a guiding document. It doesn't exist in a, and there's been documents in the last 10 years. You will hear staff say, "Oh, we've had that." But it's the process upon which that's been developed that has made it null and void because it's not community, it's not galvanized this community to act. And the prior boards, plural, Lords, have been nine independent legislative bodies who have fought for their voting district, or their constituent groups, to act. That's been the strategic plan at DeKalb County for 10 years. It's been a competitive, political environment. You're a governing body of a school system, you're not the Georgia Legislature. There's an entirely different set of skills that are needed.
I have a question, and my question is, how did this go along for 10 years and there was no intercession for someone to be able to say, "At some point, we've got to stop"? As a member of DeKalb County, a parent, former parent of students in the DeKalb County system, and knowing that this was taking place, and we're looking at taxpayers' dollars and watching this all happen, but it was allowed to take place for a period of 10 years, and there was nothing that was done in order to stop it until just recently?
Great question. First, what you've lacked over the last 10 years is unified leadership in both the Board and the Superintendent. There's been a lot of series of unfortunate events. Go back over the last 10 years, the number of Superintendents, changes on the Board, and there's been no unified, structured, stable leadership, okay? There is, and it's, it is clear throughout this country, urban school systems that have performed the best over the last 20 years have had the most stable, effective leadership. It's matching the people who are around this table, Superintendent and this Board, to operate a governance leadership team. If you get the right leader, I mean, you've had, what, five Superintendents in 10 years? So clearly, you haven't found the right leader yet for long term. And I'm talking, long term is more than a three-year contract, okay? Getting the right members on the Board of Education, and over time, that stability, that's one of the intangibles, we're going to talk a little bit later, but it's perfect right now, that stability is absolutely critical. You cannot have the Superintendent position be a rotating position. You cannot have it constantly going in and out based on political differences and political... If you have the right person, you need that person in place for a long time to make a difference in a system of this magnitude and a complexity. You need a stable Board. One of, and it's a professional concern, is potentially, all this changes in November of 2014. That's not stability. That's 18 months away. And I've talked very clearly with the Governor's Liaisons, as well as Superintendent Thurman, that I have a professional concern that you can do great things in the next 18 months, and there's election in November 2014, and everything changes again. That's a real deep concern. Systems need stability. They need the right leadership, and you haven't had it. So all those unfortunate events have actually helped the problems stay mass, because every time you get a new leader, people get, what? Hope. Things are going to change. So you give time for it to change, and it doesn't change. Then you're on to the next leader. Hope again appears. So those series of events have actually extended this way beyond what it should have been. This should have been dealt with a long time ago. The second piece to that is, which is, goes back to a statement I made earlier, you've still been treating this system as though it's a North-South, African-American, Caucasian problem. It's not. It's far more complicated. The DeKalb you're serving today is not that. The DeKalb you're serving today is more like Cincinnati, Ohio, New York City, Boston, Massachusetts, any other urban environment, Louisville, Kentucky. It is not your DeKalb of 30 years ago where you have an African-American community and a Caucasian community. What it leads to is, one of the things you have here, you have parts of this community who have great capacity where schools are actually doing well. They have capacity, and they're doing well. You have, in those schools, not a significant incentive to improve because they're doing well. It isn't as though the whole system isn't doing well. You have areas where schools are doing well. Capacity's there, but there's no incentive to improve. You have other parts of the county where there is little or no capacity, but tremendous incentive to improve. Problem is, they don't have the capacity to do it. But part of your challenge is how to get capacity and incentive to line up, how to get those that have capacity to be able to distribute capacity across this district, and those who have incentive to even distribute incentive. Everybody should be galvanized to improve. But what has happened is those who have the incentive to improve and no capacity are fighting tooth and nail every day to get more capacity. Those who have the capacity with no incentive are fighting tooth and nail every day to protect what they have. That has to stop. And that's where, and what I've seen, and I've said, I've been here 20 years, and I've watched this variation of this Board, they've been battling that dynamic of capacity versus incentive, and they've been battling at this level. You can't battle this out at this level. You have to model how we have to ensure capacity extends across this whole district, and everybody shares in the incentive to improve. If you model that in your decision-making, you model that in your governance, you can help change part of this culture, which believes that you must compete and fight for resources. Those who don't have it, it should come from those who do. Those who do have it, you could fight to retain it. That has to stop. That's one of the fundamental problems that's been there for the last 10 years.
I actually have a set of questions, so be patient with me.
You've been patient with me, Thad, so you deserve the same.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Actually, I guess the first three have to do with both the timeline and the strategic planning, or the planning components, actually, that go beyond strategic planning, with respect to the 11 requirements. And I've got a set of questions, really, that fall under that. You mentioned that there may be some extension, if you will, in the amount of time beyond the 1231 deadline, but you also mentioned that one of the elements would probably have to have a three- to five-year timeline, academic performance specifically. Does that mean that even if the 11 are addressed at some period shortly after 1231, that the district does not get removed from probation until that three- to five-year period expires?
No, they can get, they can get removed from probation. There is different levels of accreditation. There's advised, warned of probation in the sanction levels, and then beginning next year, there's where districts can actually achieve distinction and excellence. But you'll move in that ladder based on the progression of work you do.
Okay.
And so it'll take you probably a good three years to get to credit. What can also happen is we will start to, as you move forward and you start to address these 11, we will give you further direction on the next steps associated with some of them. There are next steps. I mean, one that we talked about earlier, hold on a second. One of the required actions from the full evaluation, and I'm going to apologize upfront, these reports are written by educators for educators, okay? They're not written necessarily for the general public. This is a process of professional engagement, so educators in the audience will understand what I'm saying. If you don't, I will try to restate it. But one of the things that's missing from this system is required action six: ensure a robust district diagnostic assessment program, which includes universal screener, progress monitoring, benchmarks, that is systematic and a regular component of the district's comprehensive assessment system, including a variety of formative assessment tasks and tools to monitor student progress, and provide school personnel access to the state longitudinal data system. So what's missing is there's no system-wide structure for this to happen, which connects across the district to the schools, to the principals, to the teachers in the classroom, so that there's benchmarking where I can walk into a classroom and a classroom teacher, no matter where they are in the district. Now, that doesn't say there's some classrooms in some schools that have this, but I could walk into any school in this district and ask a teacher, "How do you know where every one of your students is related to the third-grade standards for the state of Georgia in mathematics? How do you know where each one of those students are related to that?" Every teacher in this district who teaches third-grade math should be able to say, "Yes, and show me exactly where they are." That actually is a standard that most of the country, especially large systems with the resources, those teachers have that information at their fingertips. They know it every day. They live it every day. What's remarkable about a system this size and with the financial resources, that doesn't exist across the system. It should have already existed. That's one of the characteristics of systems your size, is your use and deployment of technology solutions to give teachers access to data is usually far ahead of the rest of the country, because you have the financial resource to put in a system like that, because it costs a lot of money to do that, a lot of resources, and you need a lot of capacity to do it. It doesn't exist here across this system. So that came as to one of the things that we're looking for, okay? That would, getting that in place is just the first step. It doesn't improve student achievement, but if you don't have that, you don't have knowledge and information to improve. So that's the first one. Then you would expect us to come back and say, "Okay, now provide teachers with the instructional development to use the system, to make decisions regarding lesson planning, to enact individual student education plans, to help students who are at risk. How do you monitor it? How do you improve it? How do you show results with it?" That's the next layer. And then you'll start to see progress.
Along with that, there are, I've got four questions that are related to that, and then I want to come back to the strategic, and I don't want to dominate the conversation, so if someone else needs to. With respect to the deliverables regarding the 11 items, actions required, does advanced ed have a template for what the content or the categories of responses need to look like?
We give a general template, it's not complicated. We're going to ask you to assess your progress in each one, give us evidence of what you've done, but a precursor to that is you designing, identifying action steps you intend to take, and then as you take each action step, don't just tell us you... And then, as you take each action step, don't just tell us you did it. Actually, give us evidence that it made an impact. Don't just tell us that the board went through training. Okay, that's pretty easy. You did training on these five dates. What was the impact of that training? What behaviors, what actions, what improvements? And where's the proof that that did? Give us evidence. You know, it's like Mr. Thurman asked whether I have confidence in him yet. I said, "Not until you produce results." I have hope, but there's no evidence yet. I want evidence.
Okay. So, along with that, along, in those areas...
That's all Melvin.
Well, that was our first meet. We've now gotten to know one another.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we're getting to know each other.
All right.
There's a little bit of...
There is.
In those areas, do you have criteria along with that performance level or that level of evidence? Is there a benchmark that you have for what that quantitatively needs to be?
Qualitatively.
Okay.
We do. And what I would do is tie it to our existing rubrics in our indicators. So, we would take a required action like the one I just read and actually give you the indicator, indicators that most, that best describe this specific. And in those rubrics, there are performance levels, and in the performance levels, there are expected behaviors and actions.
So, and this, this really relates to the third one, and that is, how will you determine whether or not the deliverables that we give you December 21st actually meet your expectations or the rubrics? Is it possible for us to get a copy of the rubric so that as we're building this, we'll know what...
We will give that to you, absolutely. And then, of course, once you provide all this to us, we review it before we come on site, but then we physically come on site again to look for our own additional evidence.
Okay, okay. And the last two actually have to do with your discussion regarding the strategic plan. Do you have a list of best consultants that would give us that process in the shortest, most cost-effective way?
I've actually started, I've shared some possibilities with Superintendent Thurman. It is not something we will do because we have a different role to play here, but there are other avenues here in the metropolitan Atlanta area that are very good, and in fact, some are exceptionally good, and I think could be very useful to the system.
Okay. And then finally, just based on my experience, having an effective action or business plan that supports the execution of the strategic plan, you didn't mention that, and I'm just curious as to know where you've seen effective strategic plans develop. What's been the success rate minus a business plan?
Well, actually, I didn't mean to omit that, but I actually break down business plans into annual or shorter-term objectives because they're tied to resource allocation. So, you need to break it down. If the strategic plan is your next five or six years, then each year, there's a definite business plan associated with the priorities that are aligned with the objectives of that strategic plan.
And would that be the superintendent's responsibility to develop the strategic plan or the board?
Well, it's both. It's the staff and the board. Because ultimately, you want that to help ident, to help guide your decisions throughout the year. But you should have input into that.
Thank you.
I'll ask another question. Obviously, the shortest-term thing that we're going to have to deal with and produce evidence for is the budget process for 2014, 2013, 14. So, the process we're about to go through. Could you talk a little bit about the evidence or the outcomes there that would lead you to be comfortable that we had handled that process effectively and in evidence-based?
Okay. The first thing I had mentioned earlier is I think it's very important for you upfront to establish in your discussion, and it should be in public, what are the high-level objectives you want to achieve in next year's budget at a very high level? Okay? You're absent a strategic plan, okay? So, what are those high-level objectives that you want to achieve? The second is, how are you going to approach this budget? And you're going to give, that gives direction to staff. Staff should be developing the budget for you to review, to question, to eventually adopt. For instance, one of the things that we've heard a lot of districts do, especially in the last five years, that budget cuts will come furthest from the classroom. The first series of budget cuts will be furthest from the classroom. The very last budget cut we will make, I mean, we will avoid impacting classrooms. And there are districts who have said, "Okay, the non-negotiable in this budget process is we will not raise class size." Another non-negotiable will be we will not reduce classroom allocations for resources." And those guide how the staff then goes about their work. Now, you have the financial resources. Put aside the deficits you must satisfy, but you need to reallocate and redirect those resources. In order for the staff to know how to do that, you have to give them some parameters. But you need an open, honest discussion with each other about what those parameters are. So, you have your high level, and then you have some parameters. You know, you don't want them coming back here and say, "We're going to cut 150 teachers and raise class size by .5 students across the district." Or, you know, "We're going to cut all paraprofessionals who work in classrooms." That's, if you have said cuts must come furthest from the classroom, then they'll know, "We're not coming to this table with classroom cuts." Quite frankly, you've gutted the classrooms, if you want my professional opinion, in DeKalb County. One of your challenges is to restore the type of resources and support and direction assistance that classrooms need to be successful. And you need to invest in making sure you have, you retain and recruit the very best teachers that you can. Because I will tell you the success of your school system, you can set the direction, but if you don't have, we know this, you don't have effective leaders in your schools and effective teachers in your classrooms, you're not going to get there. That's one of those non-negotiables. You have the resources, if redirected, to compete for the very best teachers and to compete for the very best principals.
Dr. Elgar, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. One of the issues that I think, I think it's very challenging, discussion about capacity, didn't really get to is its sort of relationship to the whole governance. Mr. Thurman has undertaken a governance top and bottom because governance limited us at the board level or even at the central office, but the relationship between the central office and the school health. And one of the things, and I guess I'd just love to hear your thoughts on this, is that one end of the spectrum is the turnover of superintendents and boards and the instability there. And sort of the opposite effect is the long-time maintenance of a bureaucracy, basically the central office. So, you have lots of turnover in a board and you have bureaucracies that stay there forever. And that, there tends to be a bureaucratic inertia to change. And what I'm concerned about and would love to hear your experiences where, because I agree that I think capacity is a very significant issue for those schools that are underperforming and most dramatically in those areas in which the socioeconomic constraints are greatest. But there's been, I think, a culture in our system not to actually address the capacity issue. I know you talk about there's a great yearning to build capacity, but it's almost impossible to build capacity where you have no capacity. So, the connective tissue should be your, you know, scaled-down but right-sized central office to equitably allocate resources to build stuff like that. But there's a long history that goes back, as you point, I think, more than 10 years, 30 years, of not really addressing that kind of inequity that manifests itself in the inability of those who don't have resources to build capacity in a way to then build those resources in a way that delivers results to students.
Great question. One of the things that a superintendent must do in any district is establish the organizational infrastructure upon which the district operates. Must present it to the Board of Education and have concurrence across the superintendent and Board of Education. That has to be done here first. One of the things I often tell school leaders is create that chart with no one person in mind. Take the people out of the equation. Think about the operation and identify your, you know, perfect organizational structure and bring it all the way down. And there is, there is logic, and we have a lot of experience, and there are a lot of systems that you can go to to help right-size this. You can just go to some of your neighbor's systems to help right-size an organizational structure from central office down to your schools that makes sense. But you can't do it with people's names in those boxes because it compromises your objectivity. All right? So, that needs to happen first. Now, then you have to decide, "How quickly can we move to that structure?" Because then, it's the movement into that structure that becomes very challenging. A Board of Education plays a fundamentally critical role as you restructure. You ultimately have to make the decisions to support that, but you must allow the superintendent to deploy it. Don't get involved in the deployment of it. Provide the leadership, the authority for it to occur, but do not try to deploy it for him or her, whoever's that. Do not start to get involved in, "Well, I think this person would be best in that position." Then, you've taken an objective process and made it critically political and subjective. There is no more difficult task when you're leading an organization as a CEO or president or superintendent or owner of making personnel decisions. Your job is not to influence those decisions because you make it a political process, not a professional employment process. So, it's really important, I think, that Superintendent Thurman needs to objectively take a blank piece of paper, get you engaged in an objective discussion about the design of this district, not the assignment of personnel. Once you agree on that design, then charge him with the responsibility of transitioning to it and making the employment decisions based on his professional opinion of who belongs in the best place. It won't happen overnight, but he needs a design to move to. That is where your role must be. But I cannot say it enough, you have to stay out of the administrative responsibility and prerogative to deploy that design. You help with the design, you approve the design, but then let him deploy.
Dr. Elgar, would you give us your input on, we talked about a student achievement, we talked about a strategic plan. In order to, the strategic plan drives the curriculum. And my, from your experience, how can we best correlate the strategic plan and the curriculum to ensure that we improve student achievement?
At the, the beginning of your whole strategic planning process, there usually are two or three galvanizing purposes. And certainly, one of them, your core business is what? Educating students. It better be heart and soul. Okay? Then the question becomes, all right, what values are you going to hold true to accomplish educating every student in DeKalb County? And then, you start to identify through needs analysis and whatnot, where are the areas of greatest need where students are not being educated? For instance, you have populations that are being successful. Well, why are they being, versus populations that are not? What is it that this county is not providing? And you've got to remember, you're an urban school environment in the 21st century. You're not a segregated school system, Caucasian, African-American in 1970. You're an urban school system in the 21st century. Use of technology, the availability of technology, all of these pieces play into educating students today. So, what strategies are you going to deploy for today and tomorrow's students to be educated? We have a growing number of schools and school systems that have adopted a "bring your own technology" to school, okay? And then, we have others who have said, "No, if we can't ask them to bring their own, we have to provide everybody the exact same thing." We have that dynamic going on. The use of technology is, is actually, the gap there is a growing gap in our schools today. And yet, it's a very important, it's an integral part of the children in which we educate. Our kids, this is their world. Every kid you have is what I call a digital native. They have grown up in a world where all they know is the Internet and technology. Any kid born after 1995 is a digital native. Everybody in this room, I don't see anybody born after 1995, is a digital immigrant. We adapt technology. We grew up in a world that didn't have it, and now we're adapting it. We're learning how to use it. And I know that the MacBook is over there, but I can take the average 12-year-old. The average 12-year-old would use that MacBook better than anybody in this room. I'm sorry, but... But technology is an important part of their world. And yet, it is a, it is also one of the greatest strategies to reduce the inequities that our kids come to school with from all different walks of life. So, if you say, "Bring your own technology to school," well, how much of your population can do that? Part of it. You're committed to educating students and you learn, you've got to know what your population is. Well, 70% of them can do that. Now, how do you, how do you help the other 30%? And quite frankly, that's a more rational way to go about it, is to try to provide those who need. This is what I mean about equal versus equity. Equity is, I'm going to give more to the 30% who don't have it than the 70% who do. Equal, which has paralyzed people in districts this size, say, "Unless we give everybody exactly the same, even if student A doesn't need it, but student B does, we can't do it." So, then you don't do a lot of stuff because, how do you give everybody, 100,000 kids, an iPad versus 20,000? We don't have the money for 100,000, so we've got to put that off for another year until the next year comes by. We still don't have the money, so another year comes by. You keep, because you're trying to give everybody the same when everybody doesn't need the same. So, this whole piece on educating students, one of the things that is very helpful and one of the things we want to see is, are you having conversations at this level? Not conversations about students in District Two versus students in District Nine, about students across your whole system and how we can ensure equity and how we support them to be successful in the educational process. And what can we do at this level to allocate resources to help those who need it while continuing to support those who may not need this specific support strategy? So, it's that type of conversation that we want to see more of at this level. Conversations that are about all the students in DeKalb County, about how you can use the abundant of resources, and there is an abundance, even though you're in deficit, if you use them right to meet the needs of this school system. Those are the conversations we're going to look for as evidence, that you really understand your primary focus, consistent with that strategic plan, is educating students. If we just see educating students and we never see on the board you discussing what that looks like in policy, what that looks like in budget development, what that looks like in allocation of resources, we're going to say, "Well, wait a second. What does that mean to you? We don't, we've, you don't even discuss it, yet it's your primary purpose."
Just have a quick question about the operating environment to get back to the least important, probably shortest-term issue that we'll address outside the budget governance. You had talked about how the operating environment here had been negative over a period, a long period of time where we were engaging inappropriately with the different stakeholders in the system, whether that be staff or parents or staff in the schools, students. It's obviously a challenge when the community is fairly accustomed to being able to access you, et cetera. What I heard was you standing almost err on the side of caution here, you know, risking less engaged in the way that people have in the past than you should rather than kind of continuing those habits. I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit from the governance perspective about what that might look like for us with regards to each of those stakeholders?
I think what it, one of the first things you may all design and agree to is a standard operating procedure to receive phone calls or emails. What is it that you do? And almost, and I've seen some districts do this, is you give, you give every board member a script. I mean, it gets down to that level of detail. To help you, help guide you through a very difficult conversation, if it's on the phone or an email exchange, because inherent in most of those interactions is a lot of emotion on the other side. Because somebody has been wronged or feel they've been wronged or they're upset, there's an emotional, and it's driven them to reach out to you and they want you to fix it tonight. And that's really hard for you as an elected or appointed official to respond to. So, the first thing is, agree on a standard operating procedure. Then, really talk about some of the scenarios, either that you have faced or that you believe you may face, to really talk through this. This is part of the training that I think right away could be very helpful to you. From budget... budget development to engaging your community and the best way to respond to that. We can certainly help you with the standard operating procedure, you know, or the School Boards Association, but there, you need to agree on how you're going to handle those. The community needs to be respected in their view, but you don't need to solve all their problems. In fact, their problems can be addressed, it's just you're not the vehicle for that to happen. There's a, how many staff do you have? Okay. You have enough staff.
We have enough.
Okay, you have 10, what?
Oh, District 1?
Yeah. Okay. There's nine of you and there's 14,000 staff. Who do you think has more capacity here? Michael?
We've talked about capacity and incentives, and we've talked about that there is no differentiation between the North and the South, that there is no North and the South. We're looking at the totality, and I believe that we all believe in that precept. But the thing comes down to the reality, when we're talking about capacity and looking at the North and the South and looking at economics that the South may not have, we look at communities, we look at where the communities are and for that economics coming about, taking into effect that we have to most certainly consider that there's a larger spectrum going on here. When we begin to look at the county commissioners, we begin to look at everything else that's taking place in order to help build that capacity. Also, I think, looking at everything that's going on, the 10 years and more that I've seen of what's been taking place here is a mindset. And so it's beginning to change that mindset about capacity incentives, but we have to be realistic, would you not say that when we're looking at South DeKalb, there's a total difference when you're talking about economic capacity and being able to build it to that point, affordability, being able to impact, and giving people incentive? So I think that there are certain areas that not only maybe capacity or incentives, but both that might be lacking. And I think that most certainly, would you not agree that that's something that we're going to have to realistically look at?
Absolutely. And I think my point there is that do not look at this as nine districts that have to have all equal distribution. You do have areas in this county that have more significant need, both in capacity and incentive, and that as a board, you have to pay attention, that if there is in District X more need, that it shouldn't be from another district saying, well, I have to have my equal or I'm not going to support them. I've heard that from boards of the past. That has to go away. That's part of that operating environment, that just has to disappear, because then it's a competitive, you know, exchange. We're going to negotiate with each other. You give me this, I'll give you that. That's not the way to govern.
A quick question. So you spoke about the reorganization diagram and slimmed-down or trimmed-down chart with no names on it that we would provide to Mr. Thurman?
Well, he'll present it to you. You need to, you need to give him feedback and eventually agree that this is it.
But dealing with an elected board that's going to have turnover, how does the public trust that that's going to stay in place?
That's one of the challenges here. And, you know, quite frankly, as we get deeper into this, we're going to need to strategize on how to address that challenge. Stability, one of the intangibles going forward for this district to be successful is stability. Okay? Quite frankly, and, you know, if you determine, because you're not the board that hired Mr. Thurman, but if you determine Mr. Thurman's the right person, you need to reach an understanding that allows him to be a stable leader to see this through. I'll use APS as an example. Earl Davis was brought in as an interim, but that interim disappeared in 90 days because that board believed they had the right person. They knew they had a long road ahead. They've been on a process of recovery, but what has enabled them to move forward is they've been unified as a board and superintendent moving forward. Okay? Which is critically important to us. I professionally, as I said, I have deep concern right now for November of 2014. If this board is the right board to move things forward, then we must pay attention to them. And I don't know what the vehicle can be, but I really do believe this district's best chance to really move this forward is a stable leadership around this table that is effective, not just stability for stability's sake doesn't work. If you are the right people doing this job in an effective way, then you need to stay in place long enough to see the results that that infrastructure can provide.
Just another brief question about capacity and following up to Dr. Morley and what you said. I think it would help, I think we're sort of getting trapped again defining capacity by economic resources, and I think it's a much broader issue, and to get your thoughts about what are the components of capacity that we really need to address long-term in order to be successful in those communities which may not have the same capacity as we would desire.
Well, first off, capacity, if you treat it simply as an economic issue, you're going to fall wasteful. Okay? The design feature I'm talking about, the organizational design of DeKalb County, actually helps with capacity. Recruitment of the right people, I mean, all right, so I have, you know, a job that's a $70,000 job, okay? It's not an economic problem, I have the money. Capacity comes from assigning or recruiting and retaining the right person for that $70,000 job. But if you have people who have jobs here but don't have the skill to do those jobs, that's where capacity hurts you. It's not an economic issue. So that's going to take time, and that's one of the reasons why you need a stable environment here, is upon which those employment decisions can be made over time to ensure that you have the right people in the right place. You may have economics in the right place, but not necessarily the right people. Capacity comes more from people than it does from money.
Jim?
Dr. Elgar, you had talked about board training, and we've got that lined up for June at GSBA, new board member. But in dealing with the budget process, can you give us some, maybe a timeline or expectations on other types of training that we might need before June?
I think one of the things is, and it's going to end up being on the job, between your, everything's on the job with all of you right now. With regard to the budget, certainly you have staff here, but maybe to look to some other local counties who have done an effective job and learn from them some of the strategies that they've implemented to manage their budgets over the last five years. And I know I've referenced Gwinnett before, but Gwinnett actually has managed through the recession actually better than virtually all the systems, not only in the state, but systems of their size in this country. And one of the reasons is, they didn't take the cut and hope strategy, which is, we're going to cut and hope that things recover. They actually assumed five years ago that it wasn't going to recover. Okay? So we need to re-strategize on how we use our resources. They restructured around not hoping, that they said, this is our new reality. In 2008, they said, this is our new reality. We can't just cut every year and hope it returns. So they've made far fewer financial cuts. They've made reallocation and redistribution of resources. They've abandoned some allocation of resources that really had been, they've been doing for years, and they asked themselves, well, why are we still doing that? Well, we've been doing it for the last 20 years. Well, why are we still doing that? And they started to abandon some of those to free up money to allocate towards the need. So it's a recognition that, and I tell school systems, especially as I was in DC a couple weeks ago with sequestration and the projected funding for education over the next seven years. The projections right now from DC down to the state level is there will be, you will, the rate of inflation, you will fall far behind the rate of inflation as far as increased financial resources to operate in the next six years. Okay? The budget cuts, the sequestration went through without, even a, outside of the president and some people in his administration, Congress left town 48 hours before the deadline, had no interest in being there, because they know they have to right-size their budget. Okay? It's not an easy decision. But over the next six years, you will not have a significant influx of new money from the tax base. So you have to strategize going forward in a very different way. One of the things we're starting to talk to districts about is, okay, you can expect flat or limited funding from the tax base over the next six years. How else can you generate revenue? Because you've got to operate. You can't just continue to put teachers on furloughs. You can't continue to flat-line their salary. You can't continue to cut. That's not, you're not going to survive the next six years. You'll be further behind the eight ball six years from now than you are today. So you have to restructure, you have to look at other revenue sources, you have to start to, for instance, Cobb County is looking at generating distance-learning opportunities to expand it beyond kids in Cobb County, actually offer this to kids outside of Cobb County, to generate, taking their very best teachers and offering distance-learning courses, using their technology to provide that and generate revenue for the county system, school system, that goes beyond the tax base. Because the tax base in this country cannot support public education any longer in an adequate way. And there's no strategy going forward in the next seven years from the federal government that will change them. Okay? We have to accept that reality and start to plan accordingly. And you cannot get through this just by cutting.
Mr.
Yeah, and I've got another, sort of as an add, and I'm glad you made the last points that you did. When you think about the Cabs situation and looking at the two governing tax authorities, local tax authorities, what strategies have you seen successful where county government, as an example, and/or the school district, the taxing authorities here in DeKalb, have been successful in managing their relationship towards economic development to help expand and diversify the tax base?
First, what we've seen is that they actually developed shared commitments where they're in the long term. And along those shared commitments is, you know, we want X, Y, and Z in our community over the next 10 years, and the school and the county or whatever the community is, whether it's town-based, city-based, or county-based, agree on the essential improvements or desired objectives. Secondly, when county governments, in this case, it's county and county school systems, up north it's town-based, but in this case, when county governments and county school systems start to identify ways in which they can share resources, there is duplication of delivery of services between county government and county schools. When you start to share resources, you actually free up money on both sides of that equation. For instance, support systems for riot kids, counseling services, other support systems, connecting the county's infrastructure, transportation, you know, how can transportation systems, both county-based and school system-based, can you start to do some things, purchasing power together? Okay? There are ways in which you can reduce your overhead if you work smart with the county, but you have to have that relationship. And, you know, part of the struggle right now is, there are issues at the county government level, as well as the county school system level. At some point in the future, if those can be reconciled and you can start to work smart together, you actually can free up resources. That's what we see. We see a collaboration there that is done, and there's a business model to help them move forward.
We'll note that Commissioner Johnson from the county is here, raise your hand. Let's give him a hand, we appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Elgar, you have discussed the timeline for addressing the required actions. My concern is, right now, to develop a strategy by which we can communicate to our stakeholders the length of time it would take us to go through this process. Based on your experience, can you give us some suggestions as to how we might be able to best utilize our communications department so that we can reduce the anxiety and the concerns throughout stakeholders?
Okay. This document that I received in February, actually, it started, it's the 11 required actions, and it has completed action items. Actually, what it really needs to first have is, here's our, a plan for each one. It needs to be a plan with a timeline for every required action. That timeline can extend, in some cases, that there are steps that should be done in the short term, between now and December, steps for next year and each year, that extends for some of these, what's your plan over the next few years? That can then be put into a communication tool with your community at large, where you don't just share, this would be a very technical, it's really 11 business plans, right? To, you know, I've seen some districts will say, well, here's our 11 items in this case, and they have a timeline, it's sort of, and they have a bar to completion, you know, we're 30% there, we're 40% there, and they give some real highlights of their progress, they promote the steps that they've actually done, not what they intend to do. Because people may read this as, first, they read your plan and say, well, they got a plan, but ultimately, people want to know what you did. So you actually, you're very transparent in your website and say, you know, here's our progress and our plan along each one of these continuums. But this is lacking a business plan for each action item, for each required action. And then under that, you start to identify the steps that you actually implemented and the results that were achieved by doing it. What improvements were made? Other questions?
I was going to ask you to define equity or equitable?
Equity is directing the resources based on need. So the areas of greatest need would get the greatest resources. It's a specific targeted distribution of resources and support based on need.
My last question for you is, kind of, we've got a formal timeline for engagement with Advanced Dad and, you know, with the review process for our accreditation. Informally, what's the best way in which we can draw on you? Because you've mentioned several ways in which tonight, from benchmarks and thinking about comparable school systems, to thinking about consultants, the right protocols for behavior, what are ways in which we can kind of productively engage with you or your organization?
Well, first you have the benefit, and some may classify it as not a benefit, that we live in your backyard. So, you know, my availability to do this, I will continue to engage Superintendent Thurman on a regular basis, key members of his staff as he needs me to, the governor's liaisons to stay part of this process. You have my commitment to that. Secondly, we have staff that will engage staff of Mr. Thurman's in really documenting your progress and making sure that you're in a position to share your evidence, so that you're well-prepared for that. Third, and we'll do it privately because we're not in a public endorsement, where there are areas where you need external assistance, like strategic planning, we certainly, based on where we believe, we will only provide names of organizations or entities that we know can provide this. We will give a short list of, but that list is not binding. You have the right and responsibility and authority to do whatever you want, but for instance, Mr. Thurman asked me about strategic planning, I gave him a short list. Whether they come from that short list or someplace else, what I did was say, we know these three organizations are credible, we know their track record, we know they can do this job, because we've seen them do it. So you have all of that. The other is, I would encourage this board, to the degree they're comfortable, to continue to engage me as you did tonight, because, you know, what I want to commend all of you for is your thoughtful questions, your, the fact that you've really listened intently, that you've really tried to understand your responsibilities, and I think we should continue to build on this, because ultimately, this district's future, most short and long-term, is highly dependent upon the effectiveness of leadership that happens around this table. And I'm willing to be part of this, to help guide you in ways in which you need guidance, but support you in ways that you, you know, that you need it to move forward. What we can bring to this conversation is experience that goes well beyond the borders of DeKalb County, and that's the best contribution we can make, is we have a perspective that goes well beyond the borders here, that cuts across this country and other countries, that can help you understand, first off, you're not the only school system in this country that has some of the dynamics you're dealing with. You're not the only school system in this country that's in debt. You're not the only school system in this country that's struggling to improve student achievement. But we've seen school systems with those struggles in the past, and we've seen those school systems school systems make changes so that their future was far better. No more questions. I just have a final comment. Just a, I've mentioned about stability, and that's really important. The second piece to this for all of you is focus. Focus on what needs to be accomplished and stay focused. That takes discipline. You're going to have a lot of people, the general public, in your schools, a lot of people from all over, including media, who are going to be, can be distracting to that focus. Stay focused. Stay disciplined. Okay? Third is, you will achieve incremental results. Incrementally, you will achieve results that are meaningful and long-lasting. Don't expect results overnight. Don't try to fix every problem overnight. But stay diligent to expecting and pursuing incremental results over time that are lasting. You want it to last way beyond your tenure, and so you have to go at it incrementally. So I commend you all for wanting to take this challenge. Those who are appointed, that was completely voluntary on your part. Commend you as, in my view professionally, you're here because of your commitment to this community as a example of your community service. For those of you who are elected in November, please take that responsibility with a significant amount of humility, humbleness, and unite yourself with the other six and act as though all nine of you are appointed tonight. Set a new path for DeKalb County. Establish a new operating environment. Be willing to make the right decisions for all the children of DeKalb County, not just those who have voters in your district. And work with your superintendent in establishing a vision for the future for this system. And remember, that vision will more than likely last well beyond all of you. So make sure the vision is right for kids, not just that are walking through the door tomorrow morning, but who are going to walk into your schools five years from now.
I want to, Dr. Elgar, we accept that charge, and certainly, on behalf of the entire board, I would like to thank you for coming out tonight and giving us direction, giving us answers to questions that we had. And I would like to thank the audience for coming out, listening, because you are the stakeholders. You are the ones that will help us to communicate exactly what we discussed tonight, and we want you to be a part of that. So with that in mind, I would accept to...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, what I would also like to recognize, the Chair of the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce is here, who's playing a significant role in the relationship we're building. Mr. Ernest Silverman, would you please stand? Thank you so much. Stand up, Ernest. He's here. And I want to thank Dr. Elgar as well for his very sobering, but also, I think, very exciting presentation. We have a unique and unprecedented opportunity to fashion and mold a extremely successful 21st century public education system here in DeKalb County. I think the steps have been ordered, and truly, it's a blessing for us and all who engage here to have this unique opportunity to get it right for the children of this county. And thank you, Dr. Elgar, and I look forward to the challenge. And Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. If you would, look at your agenda in terms of the announcements. I won't read them, each one, but there are nine announcements, and if you would adhere to those. At this time, I would call for a motion to adjourn. Call meeting moved by Mr. Orson, seconded by Mr. McMahon. All in favor? Let me know by show of hands. We are adjourned, and thank you all for coming tonight.